Everybody's ready? Good evening, everyone. It is 6 o'clock and I will call this city council portion of the city council port authority concurrent meeting to order.
And I will call the port authority to order.
Now, I believe because we have Commissioner Peterson on Zoom, nice way there, good job, I think we probably have to do a roll call of the port authority. I don't think we need to do of the city council, correct? Or should we? The croquet? So, yeah, so we will have to do a roll call of the port authority just to get the roster established and then any votes would have to be roll call as well.
So Mark, do you want to call the roll?
No, I'm doing it. President Erickson.
Here.
Commissioner Bussey.
Present.
Commissioner Nelson. Commissioner Hunt. Commissioner Luns. Commissioner Keller. And Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
All right. You all have the agenda in front of you. We've got just three items, the approval of minutes, the new business, and then the adjournment. Wanted to make sure everybody had that and also wanted to remind everyone in order to talk, you've got to push the button in front of you so the green light comes on. And otherwise, Steve won't be able to hear you and anyone on the, watching the recording or watching it online will not be able to hear you either. So if you could remember that as well. First order of business is the approval of the minutes from our March 28 concurrent meeting. And I would look for a city council motion to approve the minutes from the board authority city council concurrent meeting minutes from March 28.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by council member Dalisandro, second by council member Carter, to approve the minutes on behalf of the city council. No further council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0.
And I would ask for a similar motion from the port authority.
Question first.
Question first?
Yes.
This relates to you, Chairman. On the bottom of the first page, fourth bullet point up. And I'm just, I'm just asking for a clarification more than anything, but you were quoted as saying that there is no risk to Bloomington taxpayers with this project. And I'm just wondering, first of all, I don't recall you saying that, but if you believe that, fine, good, and dandy. But when you go down to pages 6, 7, there are all kinds, well, not all kinds, but there are a number of identified risks shown on the bullet points. So, you know, it goes back to there's no free lunch. So I was just wondering whether you want to leave it that way or not, but I just wanted to point it out.
Well, I think Commissioner Luns, the point that I was making is that the funds that we have are all cash in hand in the bank in terms of the tax increment funds that we have available immediately. And then anything that would be beyond that would be something that would be only through revenue bonds. And so revenue bonds will not impact the taxpayers of Bloomington. They're strictly against the people that buy the bonds. So the context was done in that case and I think that statement stands as it is.
Great. I knew with your finance background, there is a reasoning behind it. Thank you.
All right, well, I would then entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes by the port authority. Motion made by Commissioner Luns, second by Commissioner Bussey. Please call the roll.
Erickson.
Yes.
Bussey.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Hunt.
Aye.
Luns.
Aye.
Keller. Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Very good. Item 2.1 on our agenda is the main event, which I think why everyone is here tonight, right? Consideration of the Mall of America water park term sheet. Holly Masek from our port authority is here. I think Jason, I don't know if you're going to be pinch hitting or helping out as well and how we're going to line this up, but we'll start out with Holly. Good evening, Ms. Masek, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Just us? Good, all right. Good evening, Mayor Bussey, President Erickson, council members and commissioners. Thank you very much for having us here this evening. My name is Holly Masek. I am the port authority administrator for the city of Bloomington. Tonight, we are going to present to you the updated project proposed for the Mall of America water park. And we are going to ask you to direct staff to develop agreements and documents based on the proposed MOA water park term sheet included in your packets. So our agenda for this evening is as follows. I'll give an overall introduction to the project. We will re-ground ourselves in the 2013 South Loop principles and 2016 MOA contract objectives. Representatives of Triple 5 and the Mall of America will give an overview of the water park proposal in more detail. We will hear comments from the sustainability commission's representative. We will talk about the proposed public financial assistance for this project. We will talk through the additional terms in the term sheet that have not been outlined before you. And then we'll talk about the benefits, risks of the project, and then we will go to the suggested motion as well as further discussion and Q and A. So to take you back to the beginning, why was a water park proposed here? A water park has actually been a proposed part of Mall of America plans since its inception. Triple 5, the ownership group for Mall of America, has a water park at their mall project in Edmonton as well as their project in New Jersey. Here in Bloomington, conversations were renewed in 2018 in earnest around this water park, and you have seen previous presentations about this project since then. In 2021, a new tool was made available to this project, which was spending plan TIF. That was made available by the state legislature in response to economic difficulties following the COVID-19 pandemic. That allowed us to use the TIF funding that we have here in Bloomington for the Mall of America in ways that we typically cannot. Typical TIF is used for public infrastructure, public improvements. This TIF could be invested directly into a project to create ongoing and construction jobs. And the TIF that we have available and that we are talking about this evening, the spending plan TIF, does have an expiration date. It expires and must be spent by December of 2025. Another reason why we're looking at a water park project is because Mall of America continues to be a regional draw and we want to make sure that the mall remains healthy. The mall is the epicenter of the hospitality industry here in Bloomington. We know that when customers come to the mall, they're also potentially staying at our hotels, spending money at our restaurants and our gas stations. We also know that the mall is a satellite site for a lot of activity that takes place in Minneapolis, St. Paul, and in the region. Sometimes groups that are coming to see a show stay here and go to the Mall of America. And so continuing to keep that asset healthy is very important. Another reason is the Mall of America is changing its retail mix. So when the mall was first created, it was about 20% retail or 20% entertainment, 80% retail. And they are finding, as many malls are, that they need to shift that ratio to be more of a 50% retail, 50% entertainment model. And finally, this brings additional city revenue to us. And looking at that in further detail, some of the estimated additional tax revenue could be as follows. We're looking at projections including 900,000 in the first year of admissions tax to our general fund, 40,000 in the first year of liquor beer and wine tax to our South Loop development fund, 2.5 million in property taxes with 429,000 being the city's portion, potentially new lodging tax estimates of 350,000 per year in year one, with a total estimated additional tax revenue to the city of an estimated 1.7 million. And so the project as proposed is as follows, that we invest 160 million of Mall of America TIF into this water park. 85 million goes into the water park itself and 75 million goes into public improvements, including a parking ramp and infrastructure. This is Mall of America TIF, which means it is fenced money that can only be used in the Mall of America project area. The way we have set up the terms, we will capture water park cash flow after the debt service, and we will capture that into two funds. 60% goes into a Mall of America development fund that can be invested into future projects in a similar way that we can invest our spending plan TIF. And then 40% would go into a port MOA TIF administrative fund that would have the same rules as our typical TIF administrative funds. We could invest it into projects in the mall area of public improvements, or we could use it citywide for affordable housing. We are requiring future equity for this project. The mall is unable to bring it to the project at this time, but we do think that's important to demonstrate the commitment to the project in the future. And as far as we have studied, under current market conditions, this project proposal will have appropriate debt coverage. Bringing you back to the 2013 overarching principles that were set by these bodies, they are as follows. To prudently invest public funds to help transform South Loop to meet the city's vision ahead of market timelines. To transition the South Loop's built character from suburban to urban by promoting high-density mixed-use development with heterogeneous building forms. To increase and broaden the city's total tax base, keeping taxes stable by spreading city service costs over a variety of property types. To create a new neighborhood, providing additional living and recreational options for residents. To promote a positive development environment so that private industry can add jobs and employment options to the city. To increase exposure and awareness of South Loop to promote development activity. To increase sustainability by using infrastructure more effectively and sharing resources. To invest in placemaking to foster the creative sector and establish the South Loop as a distinctive destination beyond Mall of America. And to prepare for changes to development form and function due to technology. Looking at our land use framework for this area, you'll see that, yes, while we are hoping to build a denser area and build this out with housing, with office, there are also distinct land uses and the area in brown around the Mall of America was planned to be predominantly retail and entertainment. And so water park use does fit within this framework. Additionally, the 2016 Mall of America master contract objectives are as follows. To make prudent public investments that are based on a formula ratio, not ahead of private investment, used only to the extent that public resources are available based on conservative financial projections and modeling, only for defined public improvements. And we do have an asterisk there because as we have explained, spending plan TIF can be used for wider purposes than our typical public improvement requirement. We want to support the long-term viability of Mall of America, protect the city's discretion on the use of public funds, ensure that Mall of America acknowledges its financial relationship with the city by promptly and openly communicating to the city all important financial and operational changes, and to monitor the MOA's investment and maintenance of public improvements and internal Mall of America features. And with that, I will turn it over to our representatives here from Triple 5 and Mall of America, Kurt Hagan.
Good evening, Mr. Hagan.
Good evening, Mayor Bussey, President Erickson, council and port members. Good to be back again. I'm excited to be back again, hopefully last time for a while. I was looking at staff's report and it looks like, reads like a rap sheet how many times we've been back here talking about this water park. And I was reminded of a biblical parable that I wanted to share that you may be familiar with of the persistent widow who continues to go back in front of a judge time and time again, and at some point he finally says, grants her wish just to get rid of her. Didn't want to bother, so I'm saying there is biblical precedence to approve this term sheet tonight. But I have better reasons. I have better reasons to move forward with the term sheet, and I want to enumerate some of those for you. Several of them we covered three weeks ago when we were here in the update. I know a couple of you weren't here, but I'll enumerate just a few of them. I know we've covered them many, many times, but some of them that are, I think, most important. We talked last time about how this is an unprecedented opportunity. I believe this is an unprecedented opportunity. And why I say that is there's really at least three elements of this deal that I believe are unprecedented. The first, Holly hit on, you know, the source of the funds being regional TIF, that in and of itself is, for a project like this, I believe is unprecedented. I don't know that's ever been done for the state, in the state. The state, this is 10, 12 years ago, recognized the importance to reinvest in Mall of America, its number one tourist attraction. And the state recognized the benefits to the state and the region in terms of taxes and was willing to provide a regional source, thanks to, much thanks to Bloomington representative tax chair at the time, Ann Lucheski, not a local source, to help Mall of America grow and expand and to continue to be successful. So you've got the regional TIF. Then you've got now spending plan TIF or TIF flexibility, which is a very unusual tool, not unprecedented. I think it was used at least once before in the economic downturn, I believe, after the great recession. But now being used again to really help projects like ours recover from the pandemic, right? The state recognized that hospitality and projects like Mall of America are probably not able to reinvest in their properties right now, given the impacts of the pandemic, and they created this tool to help us do just that, reinvest in our projects and expand and to grow. So if you put those two state provided tools together, I assure you, that's unprecedented. To have regional TIF that's flexible for a project, that's what makes this project work. Without that flexibility and that regional TIF, I wouldn't be standing here tonight. Second, I think unprecedented opportunity, as Holly mentioned, as we tossed last time for Mall of America, it is an opportunity to move forward with a big project like this that doesn't require the upfront TIF. It's coming in later. That's, that's an unprecedented solution to, I think, and a creative solution to kind of this, this conflict that we're in where the state specifically and intentionally removed equity requirements. So projects like this could use it as TIF, yet the city has equity requirements and wanted to see that. And so we've kind of pulled those two together in a, in a solution here that I think is very creative and allows it, a project like this to move forward for the mall. Third, I think it's an unprecedented opportunity for Bloomington. I don't know of any other city that has an opportunity to build a regional tourist destination like this. Think of a convention center, sports arena, youth sports complex that doesn't have local taxes involved in developing that. Usually it's at least local TIF, if not local lodging taxes, local sales tax to support those projects. In this case, there is no financial risk to the city of Bloomington. It's all being provided for from the state. So I think those three things are all unprecedented and presented this opportunity that are in front of us. So backing up to last fall again, why a water park? I think it was asked at the last meeting. It's a great question. Why a water park? So we, you know, it became clear to us late last fall that the former water park plan that we had designed simply was no longer an option with the escalated interest rates and construction costs. That window had closed. That project's off the table. We met with city leadership and with staff and said, look, we've got this time limited opportunity to use this, this tool, this $85 million. What should we invest in? How can we invest it as intended by the state to draw tourism to Mall of America and to the region, to Bloomington? So we developed collectively, I think, three objectives on what this project should do. How should this be driven? And the first objective was, was how do we maximize the public return on investment? Public return being the most tourists and guests that we can get for $85 million. What type of a project can maximize the traffic and tourism to the region and the state? That's the intent of the regional TIF. That's why we have it. The second objective was how can this project be used to help businesses like Mall of America hospitality industry recover from the impacts of COVID? That was the intent of the spending plan TIF. So we've got, we've got to hit, we've got to hit the legislative objectives. The third was, as Holly mentioned, how do we reposition Mall of America to closer to a 50-50 mix? We know that moving forward, retail will always be where the majority of our revenues come from. But to support that retail, we need more, we need more entertainment and alternative uses to drive traffic to the center. So those are kind of the three objectives. We said, okay, what can we come up with that really hits these three goals? And so obviously, if you look at the different uses that are out there, retail's not one of them. We're trying to get away from that and focus on other uses. Office isn't, there's no chance for an, for an office development in this market, nor would we want it. It's really, that's a fairly low density use. Hotels, there's no need for more hotels unless you create more demand to fill those hotels. Otherwise, there's really not a net, net gain for Bloomington. So that really brought us back to an entertainment development. And we had just, a year previous, finished, we jointly with the BCBB, ourself and the port commissioned a study on a mixed-use facility amateur sports complex. And we did a feasibility study. It came back that was, coincidentally, we, it finished up a year sooner. And so we had the results of that study. What could, what could we do with this multi-use facility? And then we knew what we could do with a water park, albeit a smaller water park. And if you look at those two, the multi-use facility, according to the feasibility report, would cost somewhere between 75 and $100 million for the program that they had recommended. Say that it costs 85 because that's all we had, would have available to us, so we would have designed it to 85 million dollar multi-use facility. It was projected to generate 509,000 people a year in year three, stabilized year, and I think it was 54,000 room nights a year. Water park on the new, and by the way, 100% publicly funded, right? The building itself, both, both projects, water park and the sports complex, multi-use facility, would, both of them would need the parking deck and that's, so all of that is kind of stagnant. So what are the building costs? The building cost of the mixed-use facility, call it $85 million because we would have designed to, that's all the money we had. Same thing with the water park. We're going to, what's the biggest water park we can get using the $85 million? So the mixed-use facility, again, would be 100% publicly funded. For $85 million, draw 500,000 people and 54,000 room nights. The water park, 700,000 people, right? It's about 35% publicly funded. It's a, right, 245 million dollar project and draws 90,000 room nights. So simple math, right? That, that a water park will draw more people, generate more room nights at less cost. And now, by the way, the sports complex loses money. And the report was very clear that you, we could expect to lose a couple hundred thousand dollars a year because it couldn't pay for the operating expenses on its own, much less any of the debt for the project, whereas a water park can support itself moving forward. So for us, the, the choice was, was clear. The best way to use these dollars to meet those objectives would be a water park, right? So we had to, we had to completely reimagine this water park, knowing that the old plan wouldn't work, kind of go back to the drawing table as to how do we, how do we cut literally 30% out of the project budget? And how do we maintain our focus on sustainability, right? That was one of the goals that we heard loud and clear from, from these bodies the first time around. So kind of given those objectives, yet how do we maintain the entertainment value of the previous water park? We redesigned the water park and made really three major changes that we went through three weeks ago. One was to almost eliminate the wave pool. The wave pool is 52,000 square feet. The new wave pool is 8,700 square feet, something like that. It's an 87% smaller wave pool. Wave pool was massive, right? And it took up a lot of, of space in, in the project. So by downsizing that, it freed up space so that when we made the building smaller, we could still keep all the rides and slides. We pushed the rides and slide towers on the outside of the building instead of the inside of the building so that again, allowed us to kind of shrink that envelope. And the third change, and I think the most significant change is the retractable roof, as you can see behind us. We believe that, first off, there's an entertainment value to it, to have a completely clear, transparent roof over the entire project, but to be able to open it up and, and open up the windows, there's also windows on the sides and allow fresh air in and out. We think, our engineers think, that this could be the single most important architectural element change we could make to reduce energy in this building, energy consumption in this building. And it's, it's common sense, right? You think about it, and our water park in West Edmonton, our water park in New Jersey, anytime we're above probably 55 degrees or 60 degrees, we're conditioning, right? Because all of that heat that generated by the water, by the people, and by the lights is captured, even so it's even 60 degrees in, we're air conditioning that building. Now, you have the ability to open up this roof partially, entirely, right? And that you can regulate how much fresh air that you're bringing in. So it will have a significant impact on energy reduction and the sizing of the air conditioning that's needed for this project. So those are kind of the three major changes that we made, that we covered three weeks ago. What's not changed is our commitment to sustainability, right? As these bodies know, we have been, Mall of America, as you've heard me say before, has been sustainable before, sustainable was kind of the, the common language in architecture today. It was designed, had LEED or U.S. Green Building Council been around 35 years ago, I do believe that Mall of America would be LEED certified. And in fact, now they do have a program that, we just met with them a few weeks ago, kind of a retroactive program where you can go back and certify buildings that are in existence. And we're going to go through that process. But since U.S. Green Building has, Council has been around, since LEED has been around, every project we've developed has been LEED certified. Radisson Blue, J.W. Marriott, the Office Tower, Phase 1C expansion are all LEED certified buildings. And we did that without a requirement of the city, right? That's, that's what we do. We do have a focus on sustainability and we'll continue that commitment to sustainability. We will make a commitment, as we've outlined in the term sheet, to seeking LEED silver. Now, it's only a commitment because there is no LEED certification for water parks that exist today. It's impossible to get a water park certified. Again, we've met with the U.S. Green Building Council. I think they are willing to work with us, excited to actually work with us to establish standards for a water park. They would like to see this be the world's first LEED certified water park in the country and as a demonstrating project that they can use elsewhere. So they're willing to work with us, but until we know what those standards are, we don't know if we can achieve it and what it will take to achieve it. Even if we do know what the standards are, the way LEED, LEED works is you don't know what your score is until six months to a year after you're open, right? You don't submit for LEED certification until the project is open. You've got data, performance data, operating performance data that you submit to them. They go through and score, score, they issue points for different, different, like taking a college exam. You don't know what your score is going to be until you get, until you get the report card back. That's kind of how it works for LEED, right? We, we know where we think we're going to get points in different categories. We know how many points we think we're going to get, but you just don't know until you get that back. So that's why we can only make, a commitment to make best efforts to achieve LEED, but until there is a standard set out and we understand what it takes to do that, we, we simply can't commit to it. We've also maintained our enhanced sustainability investment. If you recall previously in the last term sheet, we committed to it spending at least $5 million towards sustainability and sustainable design. We've maintained that $5 million and it's a smaller building, right? So it went from really $15 a square foot to $22 a square foot. And I can, I can almost guarantee you that we will spend significantly more than that. I would, until we understand, get into the modeling and the design, we don't know where the best use of those dollars are and how they would impact sustainability, but we'll certainly, I think, at the end of the day, be spending probably twice that amount, but I just can't commit to that at this time. The other benefits that haven't changed, I think Holly's report or staff report really outlines them, the importance to Mall of America's sustainability, the importance to the Bloomington hospitality industry, the importance to the region, the state, all of that has not changed. The importance to Bloomington's tax base has not changed. Those, all of those benefits are still in place, albeit a smaller project. The other opportunities, I think it's important to note, that are created by the water park... The other opportunities, I think it's important to note, that are created by the water park is, I don't want to call them unintended consequences, but result of doing the water park is likely a water park hotel, right? That will, again, to satisfy the demand for the new, the new demand, hotel demand that will be created by the water park, it will make sense to put a water park hotel attached to this, which again, creates more jobs and taxes and tourism. The unique piece, I think, that's really unique about the way the term sheet is structured is recapturing $100 million of water park profits, which in turn go back into Mall of America and South Loop for yet additional development. So I call it a two-for-one, right? As opposed to doing the sports complex or something upfront where you're spending all the money, you're not getting anything back. Here, you're spending the money, getting it back, spending it again. So effectively, you could potentially do both, right? For that, for the same dollars. Before I close, though, I do want to say, give a couple of thank yous. One to Holly and Jason for, and Shane, who I've been working with for many months on this term sheet, for coming up with, I think is a very creative solution to solving the challenge we were having about this equity, no equity, how do we get through this? And we did, and I give them credit for it. That wasn't my idea, that was their idea, and I think it was a very fair way to move this project forward. Also must say thanks to the state and region, state legislative leaders that really provided these tools to us for recognizing the importance of Mall of America to the region, to the state. Also want to thank some of my friends, the friends of Mall of America that have been here tonight, the BCBB, Bonnie and Jan and Dan is here, and I know we've unsolicited letter from Minnesota Sports and Events, appreciate that. The regional chamber has been strong supporters of ours in Champion moving this forward. I saw also a letter come out from the Building Trades, our friends at the Building Trades and their support for this project, and I appreciate that. And so in closing, I simply want you to consider, you know, back to the risk question, right? Which is the greater risk, moving forward or not? Moving forward, I think as we've talked about, there is no risk to Bloomington taxpayers. There's not. There's reputational risk, there's risk to potentially losing this $85 million of regional money that doesn't come back. I would submit to you that even if that were the case, and I don't think that would be the case, that's still the right investment to make, right? It's still a better investment than the youth sports complex that I think would be the alternative. But in this case, I believe it is coming back in water park profits and could be reinvested in the project. So with that, I ask for your support, love to move this project forward. We think it's good for Bloomington, we think it's good for Mall of America, we think it's good for the hospitality industry, for the region and for the state. Thank you. I'll stand for questions, or I'll come back?
Come back.
Sit down this time, I remember last time it was about three hours.
Mayor Bussey, President Erickson, council members and commissioners, don't worry, that's coming, Mr. Hagan. So I did want to take a moment to introduce Councilmember Dwayne Lohman, who is going to read a statement from the Sustainability Commission. As Mr. Hagan stated, sustainability is an important concern of this project. Water parks do consume energy, they consume water, and sustainability is very important to the city of Bloomington. The Port Authority staff and representatives of Mall of America had the opportunity to present to the Sustainability Commission on April 9th and talk about some of the preliminary designs for the project, and the Sustainability Commission had the opportunity to reconvene and discuss those and share their comments with council members and commissioners. So with that, I will turn it over to Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Holly and Mayor, Mayor and Port officials and council members. I'd like to thank the Sustainability Commission's efforts and work that they put forward in creating the two memos. The Sustainability Commission is a group of residents appointed by the council and the staff to review and reviewed a proposal for a water park and drafted two memos on April 16th that outline the commission's concerns with the proposal and how it outlined or aligned with the city's adopted energy action plan that calls for reducing energy greenhouse gas emissions by 75% by 2035. The commission also raised concerns with the alignment of the proposal with the climate energy emergency that was unanimously adopted in 2022 by the city council. The detailed recommendations and concerns from the commission can be read in detail in the included public packet. Those recommendations speak to the commission's desire to see a LEED certification with the project, and if not obtained, the other features that would, that may make the project more in keeping with the goals laid out by the council within the climate emergency and the adopted energy action plan. Furthermore, the commission expressed its concern that all elements of the project aren't keeping with the group's deep concern regarding the energy action plan and climate emergency. Please include the full text of both memos into the permanent record as printed in the packet.
Thank you for that, council member. And I do want to point out to everyone here, obviously you've seen the packet and anybody watching at home or with us this evening, that yes, as Commissioner and Councilmember Lohman pointed out, the two memos are included in the council packet, they're part of the public record on all of this, and I appreciate that. I also wanted to add that I do appreciate the work of the Sustainability Commission and our staff who support them for their thoughtful and thorough review of this proposal. I obviously understand this has been a challenging process, I appreciate the professionalism, the expertise and the obvious passion the Sustainability Commission has brought to this issue, and I respect the conclusions they've come to and the concerns that they've shared. They are rightfully concerned about the future, and they're doing what the council basically tasked them with doing in response to our concerns about climate change. But as Mr. Hagan did mention, the proposed water park is unique. If approved, it will be the largest project we will have partnered with a developer on since Mall of America Phase 2, when the JW Marriott and the offices at Mall of America were built. It's also notable because it will be a significant water and energy user. For that reason, we asked the Sustainability Commission to look at a couple of years ago, when we were last discussing this as a term sheet, and I would suggest that asking the Sustainability Commission to review it in itself is somewhat unique. We have not asked it for, asked that commission to review most other economic development or redevelopment projects in the city of Bloomington. We have partnered with numerous developers and businesses over my time on the council, and whether it be through TIF agreements or business subsidies for job creation or zoning flexibility, to make redevelopment and economic development happen. We've done that for multifamily housing that's affordable, for mixed-use and transit-oriented development, for small business growth, and for business expansion and retention. We haven't asked for any of those projects to be reviewed for their environmental impact. And some of those projects we've supported recently for growth and reinvestment are known to be high consumers of energy and water here in Bloomington. And asking us to apply specific standards or targets related to energy use and water consumption to this specific project, when the council and the port have not yet agreed to a specific standard regarding to redevelopment or development is a complicated issue. Doing so now without having that significant conversation and having agreement by the council and by the Port Authority about whether and how we set those standards for development would be, in my opinion, a mistake at this time. We want to understand the environmental impacts of the proposed water park. We want to work with 555 to mitigate impacts, and if approved, we want to measure its impact going forward. I am confident that 555 wants to do the right thing and wants to make this project as energy and resource efficient as possible within the financial framework we're working with. It's in their interest as an owner and operator to do just that. I expect them to continue to work with our staff to identify those opportunities and continue working to figure out how to incorporate them into this project if approved.
Thank you very much, Mayor. At this time, I would invite Jason Schmidt, Assistant Port Authority Administrator, up
All right. Good evening, Mayor, President Erickson, council members and commissioners. As stated, I'm Jason Schmidt, the Assistant Port Authority Administrator, and I'm going to go over kind of the financial model as to what is laid out in the term sheet, as well as the additional terms that we are presenting tonight and asking for a vote on from these two boards. So the 2024 proposed water park, what this is, it is a privately-owned water park that we were working on. So the Mall of America Water Park Owner LLC would be the owner, and they would be the one taking out the private loan for this water park. What is being proposed is a 144,000-square-foot pool hall envelope or within an approximately 220,000-square-foot building envelope. It will include a wave pool and a lazy river, over 30 water features and slides, and the total project cost and reserves are right around $373 million. So before getting into that, I just want to do a quick overview as to how tax increment financing works. So based on legislation, a portion of property taxes that that TIF district properties pay is collected. In this case, for the Mall of America, the portion that is collected is that fiscal disparities portion, as previously stated. The tax increment that comes in goes into two different accounts. One is a project fund, where that money is directly invested into the projects based on the approved development agreements. The other fund is an administrative and reserve fund, that is to help pay for either staff's time with administering that account, and additionally, it's also pooled money that can be used on future projects or other projects that the boards feel is evident. Use of these funds can go towards funding public improvements within that geographical area, or it can be used for affordable housing citywide. And additionally, in order for these funds to be considered before these boards, staff, usually internally, as well as working with consultants, will do a performer and needs analysis to determine what is the financial need of these projects. So the Mall of America's public funding source is that TIF, the Mall of America's Tax Increment Financing District. The 2016 master redevelopment contract lays out the requirements as to how that money is determined and where it can be spent. And it requires that all parties agree, 555, the Port Authority, and the city council need to agree on exactly how that money is to be spent, and it requires the funding needs analysis. With the Mall of America Tax Increment Financing Plan, 90% of the tax increment that comes in goes into that project fund for the Mall of America's uses. And 10% goes into the Mall of America's Administrative Fund, that has the discretion of just the city council and the Port Authority. Mall of America TIF cannot be used for other uses in Bloomington, so it can only be strictly used for the development around the Mall of America. Mall of America Spending Plan TIF, so as Ms. Maisick stated, normally TIF can only be used for TIF-eligible expenses, typically public improvements or creating affordable housing. But the 2021 legislation that was passed allowed TIF that was moved over into a spending account, that allowed flexibility. That flexibility of that money can now go directly into investments, either as equity or similar investments that the port or city determines is necessary to make construction happen and is feasible, and it creates jobs. The water park project right now is expected to create roughly 251 full-time equivalent jobs, as analyzed. This spending plan TIF must be spent by the end of 2025, and any spending plan TIF that is not spent just gets moved back over into the regular TIF account. It is not lost, it just loses that flexibility and could only be used for public improvements or affordable housing. The funding balance of the Mall of America TIF District, so as of 2023, there was approximately $89 million in the Mall of America Spending Plan Fund, and in the TIF Capital Projects Fund, there was approximately $14 million at the end-of-year balance. That Capital Projects Fund has averaged and is projected to average about an additional $10 million per year out to 2034. 2034 is the year with which this increment would stop, per our agreements. So the water park project, so as previously stated, the total project costs are $373 million. Of that, 250 is for the water park, 75 million is for the public improvements, the parking ramp and the public infrastructure. There's $48 million of additional costs from reserves as well as financial costs to get to that total of 373 million. The proposed financial assistance package, based on these sources, 85 million would be coming from the Mall of America Spending Plan TIF, 75 million would be coming from the Mall of America TIF account, with which would go to the TIF ramp, and then $213 million would be coming from private debt financing. Once again, the Mall of America Water Park Owner LLC would be the one taking out that private loan, because they will be the ones owning this water park. In exchange for this large amount of assistance at the beginning, and as previously stated, we are looking to capture 100% of the water park cash flow. So this is annually. So how this works is, the water park is going to create revenue. Revenue will come in from ticket sales, food sales, towel sales, et cetera. Then there'll be expenses. Expenses will then come out of that revenue to pay for salaries of the employees, for the utilities, any reserves that need to be done, and then they will have their annual debt service payment, so their payment for that loan that they take out, that will go to the bank. The remainder is the cash flow, that is the profits. That is the portion that we are looking to capture annually, and right now, the proposal before you in the term sheet is that 60% of that annual cash flow will flow to the Mall of America Development Fund, and 40% of that cash flow would flow to the mall, or the Port Mall of America TIF Administrative and Reserve Fund. So a little bit more information with regards to those two funds. So 60% goes to the Mall of America Development Fund. Uses from this fund will be at the discretion and approval of the city council, the Port Authority, as well as 555, and it is to serve as a gap financing on future Mall of America development projects. So this money would be strictly going back to the development, future development projects around the Mall of America. The other 40% goes into the Ports Mall of America TIF Administration and Reserve Fund. Uses from this fund will be at the discretion of the Port Authority for TIF-eligible projects, will look for an emphasis on sustainability and climate resilient projects within the South Loop area, and in addition, this money can also go for affordable housing projects citywide, and state statute dictates the uses of this funding. The way the terms are written, a minimum of $40 million would go into this Port TIF Administrative Fund, with a maximum amount going in at about 60 million. Capture of cash flow does not stop until private equity and a minimum of $100 million is captured over time between these two accounts. So we continue to capture that cash flow until these two items happen. Equity is brought in, and at least a minimum of $100 million has been captured. At the last previous meeting, the question came up, how did we come up with that minimum $100 million? So I just wanted to highlight it on this slide. So 85 million, that is the, that is the spending plan TIF. So we are looking to capture 100% payback of that spending plan TIF, because that's going directly into the water park. The 75 million that is going into the public improvements, we looked at our previous recapture agreements on previous Mall of America development projects, as well as other TIF financial development projects within the city, looked at what was that precedent that we've looked at when using recapture. That recapture is that a repayment is capped at 50% of that public infrastructure investment, and so in this case, it's to the water park. And in this case, that parking ramp isn't solely going to be used by the water park, it will be shared with future other uses, that water park hotel, as well as future development to the north. And so we looked, working with the Mall of America, the water park is going to count for about 40% of the demand of that parking structure. So what we So what we then did is we took the $75 million, we applied 40% to that. That's the water park's allocation of the ramp. It gives you the $30 million. And then 50% of that is $15 million. So that's why it was $15 million plus $85 million gets us to that minimum $100 million that we're looking to capture. And as I just want to state again, it's a minimum of $100 million. If private equity does not come in by the time $100 million has been reached, that account will continue to grow until the private equity is brought to this project. So future private equity, as I just stated. So termination of that water park cash flow capture does not occur until a minimum of $100 million, once again, is captured into those two accounts, and at least 30% of private equity is provided at a future date. And that is based on the value of the water park at the time the equity is applied. Equity could come from the Mall of America owner, of the water park owner, and/or it could come from an equity partner. To incentivize the increasing, to incentivize increase in the valuation of the water park, so we want to make sure that the value of the water park continues to grow over time and that the managers don't withhold back the net operating income. So we want to incentivize them to increase the value of the water park. Through that increased net operating income, NOI, the water park owner is able to earn equity up to half of that required 30% private equity. And the valuation and cap rate of the water park at the time of the private equity contribution is determined by our three-party appraisal process, with which the Port Authority would obtain an appraiser, Triple Five would obtain an appraiser, and then those two appraisers would in turn select a third one, and then we would look at overall finding the value of the water park. So water park pro forma and needs analysis. So staff has been working with outside consultants within reviewing this pro forma, as well as the studies that have been done from the Triple Five's consultants, as well as all of the previous studies from 2018 that the city and Port Authority has entailed as well through various consultants. Under current market conditions today, we are able to say that there is enough coverage from the water park profits to cover the current debt service on the water park. And this is all based on current projections as of today. Staff and consultants, we will continue to review the draft pro forma based on known market conditions. So if this project is to move forward, we will continue to analyze in case of interest rates or anything slides to make sure that this project still has that coverage as the project moves forward. And per our term sheet, we are requiring that Triple Five requires a conditional lender term sheet with which that will be brought at the time we bring any agreements before this board. So we will have a conditional lender term sheet from Triple Five at the time any agreements would come before this board, for assurance.
So Jason, one point on this slide is my understanding that what we do have is if we don't have the conditions, we don't make the kind of money we'd like to make, which we think we can make, but may not, that there is a subordination clause on the management fees that would then provide some additional flexibility in terms of being able to meet the debt service.
Mr. President, you're getting ahead of me on my PowerPoint slides.
Sorry.
That is coming up here, but yes, that is correct. So another thing I want to lay out here as well is pursuit costs. So back in 2022, at that time, the Mall of America and the City Council and Port Authority granted the mall a TIF loan for pursuit costs of the water park. Currently, the Mall of America continues to draw from that TIF loan for these additional pursuit costs of moving this project forward. As part of a future agreement, so if future agreements were to come before this board and you look at moving this term sheet along, we would be looking to create another Spending Plan TIF grant of up to $6.5 million, which would be the balance of any final pursuit costs until closing. Mall of America's existing TIF loan maturity would be, we would be looking to extend that to make sure that it aligns with the Mall of America Project Fund, so that then they could look to pay back that TIF loan. And I just want to state, all repaid TIF goes back into the Mall of America's TIF account. And then lastly, previous pursuit costs are to be reimbursed from the respective funds. So from the Mall of America Development Fund, and are excluded from that minimum $100 million. So sustainable design. I just want to quickly highlight the terms. Mr. Hagan had already laid out majority of these that have been agreed to between city staff and the development team. And so the developer is committing to using the Energy Design Assistance Programs of both Excel Energy and CenterPoint Energy. Once again, they will be presenting the Energy Design Assistance Program findings to the Sustainability Commission, as well as they need to include a summary of the energy efficiency, fuel switching, and renewable energy opportunities that have at least a greater-than-five-to-15-year payback for consideration, as well as exploring additional funding sources that may be out there. They're also committing to enhance sustainability investment. So as Mr. Hagan had already stated, the developer shall spend a minimum of $5 million implementing energy efficiency, fuel switching, and renewable energy opportunities. These programs most likely will be identified in that Energy Assistance, Energy Design Assistance Program from Excel and CenterPoint that have at least a five-year or less payback, as well as a third-party, repetitive third-party review of the open-air building system with retractable roof. So we want to make sure we're understanding what is that true sustainability measurement from that third party. Additionally, Triple Five and the water park entity is agreeing to annually providing the city with the water park's monthly energy and water utility bills for collaboration with energy efficiency partners. And they will also be participating in the city's energy benchmarking program as required by ordinance. And then the developer has agreed to make best efforts to achieve LEED certification or Minnesota B-3 guidelines for the water park. This includes paying the sustainable design expertise and energy modeling needed to achieve certification. And once again, the best efforts are to really to continue working with that U.S. Green Building Council, continue to explore the LEED standards for this type of building. Because as Mr. Hagan had stated, those standards are not currently there for indoor water parks, and they will need to be worked on, working side by side with the staff of that council. The parking ramp will include enhanced sustainability measures, which will be guided by city staff. And then lastly, if there are any outside, other outside funding sources that we are able to locate and find for sustainability-related projects that both the city, port, and Triple Five would consider those additional sustainable measures and utilizing those funding sources. And additionally, with using the benchmarks and stuff, we are looking, I didn't state this in item C, to look at that less payback of trying to capture the Excel Energy rebates, the CenterPoint Energy rebates, as well as any other rebates, vouchers, or tax credit programs that have been offered either by the state and/or federal governments. So additional terms. I just want to kind of highlight this as well. So the water park entity, the owner, will be looking to either do a, to purchase or do a ground lease for the land with which the water park will be situated on. Within the term sheet, we have capped that value at the city's assessed value of the two properties, which is $21.26 million. The management fee, there is a base management fee of 3.5% that the manager of the water park is able to secure. But it is also a performance-based agreement as well, that there are incentives that they can get up to a 5% management fee if they meet those incentives. But the base is at 3.5%. And as President Erickson has stated, we are looking within the term sheet to subordinate the management fee. So if the annual water park cash flow is not enough to pay the debt service, the annual debt service, that the management fee is subordinated to help cover that debt service payment. And most likely, the lender is going to require that. It's most likely that the lender would require that as well. But we wanted to make sure we had it in our terms as well, in case if that was not there. South Loop Police Funding is going to continue to come from the South Loop Development Fund to 2045. This is currently happening today, and so this is just memorializing that out to 2045. And once again, within the term sheet, we will have an open book to all of the water park financial statements, so that we can go ahead and review all of the documents, the financials of this process, working with our finance team, as well as our municipal advisors, to make sure that they are living up to the terms with which we have in this term sheet, as well as in the written and executed agreements. And with that, I will turn it back over to the Port Authority Administrator, Ms. Maisig.
All right. Thank you all, Mayor, President Erickson, Councilmembers and Commissioners. As we wrap up this presentation, we wanted to take a moment to reflect and pull together the questions that we are asking you to consider today. This is a policy question for your consideration, whether we wish to make this public investment in this water park at this time, and whether you wish to direct staff to continue on developing agreements with Triple Five and the Mall of America. As a reminder and summary, the benefits of this project include that it will become a recreational amenity to the city and Twin Cities region. It will help add resiliency to the South Loop and Mall of America by bringing new visits to the district. Additionally, Mall of America's over 8% of the city's property tax base and hotels are 5.75% of the city's property tax base. So the hospitality industry remains very important here. It will generate new admissions taxes and lodging taxes, as well as new property taxes to the general fund. The Mall of America does intend to offer discount ticket prices and additional perks to city residents. And the projected water park revenue captures additional potential funding streams. So that aspect of this term sheet and this deal, we think is a very exciting opportunity for the city to be able to capture some of the revenues from this project and reinvest it into future projects and also priorities for the city. There are, of course, risks to this project. The risk that the project cannot pay its debt or does not perform as expected, that would be borne by the developer and its financing entities, not the Bloomington taxpayers. It would be very likely to remain a water park due to the value of the asset once it's constructed. But that doesn't mean that water park cash flow would no longer be captured for future projects. We also don't know the timing of the future equity for this deal. City reputation is a risk. This is an unusual project. We are making a large investment in it. By not requiring equity at the beginning stage of this project, we are breaking with our own precedent. But we do believe by requiring equity later on, we are offering a good compromise, and we feel confident in this opportunity. And additionally, there are risks of not doing this project to consider. One is that the Mall of America's performance could plateau or decline. We know that since COVID-19, their foot traffic has been down. They are recovering it. But it is important to keep them all fresh, to continue to bring new amenities to the mall. And then there are limitations on TIF. So if we did not do this project, as Assistant Port Authority Administrator Schmidt did say, we would not lose the TIF. We would retain it, but it would lose the spending flexibility that it currently has as part of the spending plan. And that expires in December of 2025. Potential next steps. So tonight, we are asking you to approve the term sheet and direct us to move forward with development agreements. And then in spring and summer, the Mall of America team would advance financing and design. Later in summer of 2024, we'd be coming back to you for consideration of agreements. In spring of 2025, seeing construction could commence. And then in late 2027, we anticipate completion and opening. And so as a summary one more time, we are asking in these term sheets to invest $160 million of Mall of America TIF into the project, $85 million into the water park itself, and $75 million in public improvements. It's Mall of America TIF, which is fenced money and can only be used in this area. The term sheet will allow us to capture water park cash flow after debt service into two funds. One for Mall of America Development Fund, that can be used much like the Spending Plan TIF can, and one for Mall of America TIF Administrative Fund that we can use for public improvements within the area or affordable housing citywide. And we will be requiring equity at a future date in order to terminate the cash flow capture. So we do have suggested motions this evening. But before we move on to them, I would like to take the opportunity to receive questions. I would like to invite Mr. Hagan back up, as well as David Lehrer, project architect, Assistant Administrator Schmidt. And then we do also have Port Counsel on hand, as well as our consultant Shane Redling from Ellers to answer questions as well.
Well, thank you all for the information. Questions? And I'm sure there are some. Councilmember Dalisandro, why don't you kick us off?
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I had a couple of small questions, and then I have one specific question that might take a little bit to get to. And I imagine Mr. Lehrer might be the right person to answer this one. So, but the quick questions. I just noted in the documentation that the water park cash flow would term under a new ownership if there was default. I just didn't, I wasn't at the last meeting, unfortunately. I didn't hear it in the notes, or see it in the notes, or hear it in the conversation. Why not? And I just wondered if somebody could answer that question for me quickly? If there's a new owner, why does the cash flow terminate? I just wondered why.
Mayor, President Erickson, Commissioners, Councilmember, Councilmember Dalisandro. And so I believe that slide is in the risks, as far as if the project were to go into bankruptcy. And at that time, if a new owner were to come in, basically, as I recall, that new owner is no longer subjected to the development agreement, because the development agreement is with the water park entity and Triple Five, not the new owner.
Makes sense. Just wanted to understand that. Thanks. The next question I had is related to the $100 million you spoke of not that long ago. I understand the 60-40 split, but I believe that the portion back to the city is capped at $60 million, and I just wondered why that was.
Mayor, President, Councilmember, here we go.
We have to do that.
Commissioners, Councilmember Dalisandro, that was a negotiated number. It is, it was simply one that we felt was realistic between staff, our consultants, and the Mall of America.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so my biggest questions are related to the, and this, Mr. Lehrer, or even, I apologize if maybe you have to bring up your attorneys here. I'm sorry for that. But in my understanding, the notion of best efforts has a specific legal connotation. And we don't have any measurement in the terms here to understand what, how we would measure the qualification of best efforts. And so I'd like to really understand how we are intended to interpret that language of best efforts as it relates to the LEED certification, and how we intend to measure it so we can decide whether or not the Mall of America has truly lived up to that notion of best efforts. What is our measurement tool?
With the help of the city attorney, she provided some examples of what best efforts are. And in essence, it is efforts that are more than just the reasonable efforts. It's not super clear, but that's what we've found when we looked on the internet, basically.
Yeah, totally, totally understand. I guess my question isn't, I'm fine with that interpretation of best efforts. What I'm questioning is what are we doing to measure it? Like, how do we decide as entities that we're going to measure whether or not best efforts were attempted and achieved, or whatever? For example, right, some interpretations of best efforts could be like, yeah, well, we tried, and it didn't happen, and that's okay. And if everybody agreed to that, that would be totally fine. I would personally not be comfortable with that, right? If somebody said in this particular case, LEED Silver or B-3 for Minnesota, B-3 was the easier one, we went with B-3. Okay, maybe we'd all agreed to that, and we would be fine with it. I might be fine with that. I just don't know what we're going to use to measure the term best effort, so I can't say whether I like it or not. And that's a problem in a contract, in my opinion, largely not for, not for our common understanding of best efforts, but our common understanding of how to enforce the terminology. So I'm just wondering if we have any thoughts on that, or, you know, maybe in other agreements. And Mr. Lehrer, I thought this about, in your situation, because I know you do a lot of LEED certification, what do you use, generally speaking, to determine if somebody's made a best effort in a case like that?
Mr. Lehrer, and I think Commissioner Keller has some lawyerly insights.
Sure.
To add to this as well. To add to this as well.
I've actually researched this question.
Can you please turn on your microphone, Tim? Thank you.
I've actually researched this as a lawyer, to answer questions like that, and you're just dead bang on with the ambiguity. It means a lot of things, depending on how you say it. Some people says best efforts means it's something you will do as a priority over other commitments. Some say otherwise. I read a Law Review article some years ago, which had a catchy title, which I can only summarize, but it said, basically, what does best efforts mean? Nothing. So you're just dead bang on, in my view, you all might disagree, that there's some ambiguity. Response to your concern about how we might address that ambiguity, perhaps examples, perhaps specific concerns about what that means in the context of a specific issue could be useful, but if you're going to litigate best efforts, are you going to spend some time, money, and effort in trying to nail it down? And I've not been myself, I really spent hours.
I believe you completely.
Because it made me nuts.
I completely understand that. That's why, that's why I think a shared agreement of what the measurement is, is important, because that reduces the requirement of that litigation and ambiguity. So that's the reason for my question. If we all agreed, then there wouldn't be any ambiguity. You either did it, or you didn't do it, and that's fine.
Yes, and I would be poor and unemployed.
I wasn't thinking of you when I asked the question, sir. I apologize.
But I was.
And, Mr. Lehrer, what, how do you usually work on the notion of best efforts?
Mayor Bussey, President Erickson, Councilmembers, Commissioners, and Councilmember D'Alessandro. A couple of points. It's a really good question. First of all, right now, the waterpark is registered into the LEED certification process. We've taken a step to take care of that part of it. Even with all the vested powers of our mayor, he couldn't convey LEED certification. Only the U.S. Green Building Council can convey that certification condition. So it's not something that myself, as an architect, who have done dozens and dozens of LEED certified projects and facilitated that effort, I can't convey that. It's only through the process that LEED has identified, that we can submit points and credits and review those. And one of the biggest things, in fact, the U.S. Green Building Council stated for us, is that there's no prerequisite building to benchmark against. So we'll have to rely on an alternative path that's not been done before, in order to make the prerequisite condition occur. And that's a really tough standard. Done projects in other countries. I am a licensed architect, also in the District of Columbia in Washington, and they require a registered project for LEED certification in order to receive a building permit. And so, but it doesn't require them to get LEED certification in order, in the future, just as that kind of standard. So when we look at making best efforts, it's really in cooperation with our efforts with U.S. Green Building Council, something that we can't promise about their efforts. And so we're taking many efforts right now, on our own, to get to this level, but we can't, we can't commit or promise LEED certification, because it's not for us to promise.
That makes total sense to me, and I, and I understand that. I mean, I was just kind of perusing, I'd done some looking at the Silver level and the amount of points you have to get out of the 110 that are required, and all the different places where you can get them. And I get it, you're going to play a game, in a good way, of like, I can't do all of those and get all the 11 points in water, but I might be able to get more than 20 points in energy, and you're going to play that game to try to get to your number. And I completely understand that. What I'm hoping that we can come to, and this doesn't have to be for these terms, I just wanted clarification as we go into the bigger documents, is that we, we all have a shared understanding of what those best efforts are going to look like. And if it gets hard, or it gets a little more expensive, we don't stop doing it, if we really believe we're going to try to do best efforts. That's what I'm, that's what I mean. Because I think, I think as soon as it gets hard, some people would walk away and say, well, we tried, like I said, and if we all think that that's what we mean, that's, that's okay. But I can tell you that this council member does not think that that's what this means, and so I'm looking for a little bit of a higher standard there. So if that, if that's helpful and makes some sense, I would just encourage you all to think about, the closer you can get to some specifics about what best efforts looks like, I think the better off we all are going to be. I have every confidence you'll try best efforts, that's not the point, it's just a matter of making sure we don't have an issue of, like, ambiguity, as, as Mr. Keller said, when it comes down to questions that we might get, you know, from outside parties.
If I could just add a little color to that, in the context of something as specific as getting a certification of any kind, to me, not being our counsel, it is a little easier, because the process defines much of what needs to be done, and I would think, even though this is a case of first impression, filing promptly, responding properly to questions, poking people in the ribs, whatever it takes, it's a little easier. When you use that expression in the context of, you know, you'll use your best efforts to make a profit, well, then, maybe it should be commercially reasonable, whatever, but that doesn't bother me in any sort of quasi-regulatory thing, because what has to be done is a little bit more clear, and failure is a little bit less ambiguous. Is that fair?
Yes.
Yeah, and I completely agree with that, and I completely understand the regulatory process associated with that, and I'm not asking you all to try to make LEED do things different than what they do. I mostly care that this has been put up as a very, very big point by the bodies, to say, we are trying to be sustainable, and I just want to understand the definition of what that means. And if best efforts has a definition that we can all agree to, I think it would be prudent to get there. That's really it. The last question I have is related to that, which is commitment to achieve. You're going to work with the energy programs at CenterPoint and Excel, and I think that's great. They have two programs. One's a basic program, one's an enhanced program, they have different. Do we know which one we are striving for, and can you talk a little bit more about the commitments that are associated with that? Because my understanding is that there are commitments that you have to agree to in order to be a part of that. They come with some financial benefits, I understand that, too. So just a little bit more to help people understand the context for that, that'd be great.
Mayor Bussey, President Erickson, Councilmembers, Commissioners, and Councilmember D'Alessandro. So the Excel Energy Design Assistance Program has an enhanced version, and I kind of will call it a regular. They have probably just a different name for it.
They called it Basic, yeah.
And what, we had a meeting with folks from the administrators of it, Wildon Companies, as well as Excel Energy, and the Enhanced Program requires a mandate of a 30% reduction in a benchmark of energy consumption for the building, in order to meet the Enhanced Program requirements. Again, it's a program that's based on other projects as a baseline.
Yeah.
And this is where we run into issues, whether it's LEED, or with Excel's program, is that there aren't any other water parks, indoor water parks, that have a baseline in order to measure this out. So we'll have to be very creative in examining that. We're intent on looking at that, but we don't have enough information or data right now to determine whether we're going to do an enhanced version, or the, or the regular version.
Okay, thanks, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I was going to balance it out here and see if we go back and forth here, but.
Mr. Lund?
I have two quick number questions. I think for Jason, probably. One is $21.21 million for the dirt, Cessar's estimated market value, how much land we talking about there?
Mayor, President Erickson, Commissioners, Councilmembers, Commissioner Lund, I do not have the actual, is it 10 acres roughly, between the two parcels? Okay, 10 acres, so.
10 acres. That's roughly out of a total of 22, 23, 25, north of the Mall of America, south of East American Boulevard. So you're talking about 40% of the land being used for this development. And then, at a total cost of the project of $250 million for 220,000 square feet in the building envelope, my third grade math tells me that's about $1,136 a square foot. And I've asked this question before, and I will again, how much of that is bricks and mortar? How much of it is wheels, mechanicals, fixtures, decorations, fake palm trees, hangings, all that stuff? And, I mean, my expectation is that this is way, way higher as a percentage of total cost than it would be for a typical real estate development.
Mayor Bussey, President Erickson, Council and Port Members, I'm not quite sure, Commissioner Lund, what the question was. So of the $245 million, that is our design build contract amount, right, that will be with, right, I'm sorry?
I thought Jason said 250 million, just close enough?
250, yeah, we've, we've.
Okay.
We've rounded up.
Okay.
At this, at this level of design. So yes, that is, that is hard and soft costs, right? Includes engineering, includes theming, includes all of those components that you were talking about. Does not include land.
Mr. Hagan, I believe Commissioner Lund is asking, do you have a proportion?
How much is it, you know, wave machines, all the accoutrements that go with operating this business? Because this is not real estate, this is a business, okay? So there's so much for bricks, mortar, roof, glass.
The shell.
The shell. It's a cubic area building. We understand that, covering a lot of land area.
And that is the mystery of Mr. Cove.
So I'm just wondering, out of that 250, is, I'm just looking for a percent, 50% in mechanicals, 50% in classically defined real estate, or whatever it is.
So Commissioner Lund, I'm sorry, so the real estate is outside of that number, right? That's the, that's additional $21 million. So the 245, 250 million is the building and everything inside the building. If you're looking for just the envelope cost, the envelope itself, just the envelope is about $50 million. But I mean, I'm happy to share with you, we've got a very detailed breakdown of what that is, but you can go through, you know, I don't know what you would include in that. Do you want to include site work? Do you want to include some foundations? It's a very, I mean, it's literally probably 30 pages of breakdowns of those costs.
Which, you're considering wave machines, interior decorations, theme, thematic decorations, you're considering that part of the building cost?
Correct.
You are?
Considered part of the total project cost, right? So.
Yeah. I'm just trying to get to.
Yeah.
Classically defined real estate. Roof, walls, machines to open the windows.
Yeah, to sit down and really go through what all those items are, and see which bucket you'd want to put them in, and I'd be happy to do that, but it's, you know, how do you define the building?
Well, the implication of that is being, when it comes to real estate tax valuation, those mechanical systems are not taxable, they're not real estate, to some extent. So that's always a question I've had. $1,136 a square foot, that's a big number.
Yeah. We'll agree on that point.
From all my experience, so anyhow, so we don't have an answer to that right now, basically.
No, but I'd be happy to, you know, share that with you, but not publicly, but we can go through that. We do have, we do have very detailed information on it, but we will agree that that's an extremely expensive per square foot cost, that these, these are extremely expensive buildings.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just quickly note that that over $1,000 a square foot is about the same as the building at Bryant Park, so just bring that up again, but.
Maybe it's a trench.
Just saying. I'd like to touch on the sustainability part of this, just a couple of quick questions to follow up with my colleagues' questions. The $5 million commitment, there's a couple of things that I have questions about how that gets interpreted. If there are tax credits that come back for solar or things like that, the 30% tax credit, how does that get factored into that? Who does that go to? Does that go to the project? Does it go back into the fund? Is that net of alternatives? As an example, if it would cost some number to put in a standard heating cooling system, and a different number to do a geothermal system, is it a net number of the difference of those? And does the roof count as part of that? Because I heard that that was an important energy efficiency thing, and to my understanding, that by itself costs more than $5 million. So how is that $5 million defined with all those variables of how that sustainability commitment is going to be executed?
Go ahead. Mayor Bussey, President Erickson, Council and Port Members, so that's, that's, that's a hard question, right? So in, in our budget, we've included in our project, total project cost budget, an additional $5 million for enhanced sustainability. We don't know, right, until we get into the engineering, what all is already included, what is not. We, so, so it's a set aside, if you will. So to me, that would be net, right? If there's a rebate coming back from Excel that pays for the additional cost, well, then it's not a net cost, right? So this would be an actual project cost that would be assigned to the project or financed by the project. We do anticipate the ability to show that the retractable roof will have significant impacts on reducing our energy consumption, and we do think we should receive credit for that. The cost of that is, now, what is the cost of that, right? Is it the rollers and the tracks? You know, how much of the cost of that roof is the retractable component? I don't know. We'd have to get into that, but I think, I think our, our point is, we will be investing significant dollars to do this retractable roof, and that should be credited to the project. We didn't have that before. So we're going to have to factor that in. If we go through the engineering, we decide that there really is no net benefit to the roof, well, then it shouldn't count, right? But I don't think that'll be the case.
So just for clarification there, you have the retractable roof in the budget, and then you additionally have $5 million for during design to look at sustainability. Both of those things are in the budget, is that?
Combined.
Combined?
Combined. We're assuming that we're going to do the retractable roof.
Yeah.
And we're also assuming that it's just part of the process that we go through the Excel program, right? And they're going to come up with items, right? They don't make them recommendations, because they don't recommend. It's a math, it's a math equation, where it says, well, if you do this, it will pay itself back in X number of years, right? So, but they leave it up to the building owner, because there are other factors in those decision processes, besides math. So, example, if you're replacing the furnace in your house, Excel may say, well, if you go to a super high efficiency furnace, you qualify for these three rebates, and payback on that additional cost would be three years, right, whatever the number is. But in your house, it may be that your furnace is in the middle of your basement, and all the ceilings are finished out, and you'd have to put in fresh air intake to do a super high efficiency furnace, means you've got to tear open all your ceilings, doesn't make sense for you, right? So Excel doesn't say you have to do it, it says this is the energy reduction that would happen, and the credits that you qualify for, and the owner needs to make a decision, is that right for this project, right? So it's, it's, it comes back to, you can't simply say you must, right? If it hits a certain level, implement this item. There are other factors that need to be considered as part of that decision process, and I think that's where it really comes back to Councilmember D'Alessandro's comment, how do you, how do you measure best efforts? That's a really good question, right? Part of it comes to trust, right? Working together for 32 years, you know our desire, right? What we've tried to, what we've done without your insistence, I think, is, needs to be measured. We want this to be, why wouldn't we want this to be LEED Silver? Right, that's good for all of us, and we will strive to achieve that, but until we understand what that means, what that takes, right? When we add things to the budget, even sustainability items, as good as they are, that means we need to take something else out, right? There is a fixed budget. So pick a number, $10 million that we're going to add to sustainability enhancements, okay? Well, that means $10 million of other things come out. What are those other things? These slides and rides, well, how does that impact revenues? How does that impact attendance, right? There are a lot of other. There are a lot of other factors that are important to this project, sustainability being one of them, right? There's no denying that. But, you know, these bodies need to look at the project through many lenses, right? Probably the most time we spent with staff is, was discussing, how are we sure that we're going to get enough people and enough revenue to pay the debt, right? Well, and it's a good question, right? And that's, that's all of our goals, to make sure that it can pay the debt, make some profits, pay this back. But it, but you need to weigh that against what are the benefits of enhanced sustainability to some point, right? At some point, there's the law of diminishing returns. I think there will be a lot of things that are just obvious, right? LED lights and things that we would do anyway, that just make total sense, and of course, we will do those. And there are going to be things that are going to be less obvious, and they're going to come at a cost, a financial cost, but something else has to come out of the budget to pay for that. What is that, and what's that trade-off? And that's, that's the process we'll have to go through.
And I appreciate that, Kurt, because, you know, on a much smaller, much, much, much smaller scale, I deal with that in my own business. You know, I mean, I build, in addition to the most stringent energy code in the country, I don't consider that enhanced energy efficiency. I assume when I'm going beyond that I'm doing that, and it sounds to me, correct me if I'm wrong, that we're on the same page there, that if you do basic things like LED lighting, that if you build the structure to the code, that's there. But then, you're going to, you have a budget that's baked into what we're looking at in terms of this term sheet, to do an additional $5 million beyond what is normal. Am I correct in understanding that?
Correct.
Okay, that I appreciate. If I might, just one other question, different direction, because I think this is something that I get a lot of questions about, is why would the City of Bloomington put money into this project? I think staff has touched on that, this is not City of Bloomington money. Can we just talk for a little bit about fiscal disparities? Because it's a tax that I think a lot of residents don't understand because they don't pay it. It's on commercial industrial properties, every business in this city pays it. It's, I think, mandated by the legislature, if I'm not incorrect, and that the Mall of America does have a special position in that the fiscal disparities paid by the Mall of America goes into this fund that's being used. And this fund that we're being used is entirely funded by fiscal disparities taxes paid by the Mall of America. So it's not being funded by any of the other fiscal disparities paid by any other business in Bloomington. Am I correct in my basic understanding of that?
Mayor Bussey, President Erickson, Councilmembers and Commissioners, I'm actually going to have Julie Eddington speak to fiscal disparities on her behalf.
Sorry for the question, it's probably the most exciting part.
Good evening, Mr. Bus, Mayor Bussey, President Erickson, Commissioners, City Councilmembers. Many years ago, we had legislation that provided that fiscal, certain fiscal disparities would be considered tax increment, and we have utilized that tax increment over time, and we will do so until the Mall of America TIF district ends. And that has been in place for many years. Does anyone have any questions with respect to the fiscal disparities?
So what you're talking about, though, that is specifically the fiscal disparities paid by the Mall of America, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So the fiscal disparities that is paid by every other business in this community goes elsewhere, and, you know, I think, from my understanding, Bloomington is the second-largest net contributor to fiscal disparities, and it's going to places like Lakeville to help them develop and things like that. Is that generally accurate?
Councilmember Nelson, that is absolutely correct.
Okay. So, so this one is actually, the legislature has allowed us to actually use some of that fiscal disparities right here in Bloomington with restrictions that it has to be used at the mall. We can't use it anywhere else, but.
As TIF, correct.
As TIF, okay.
And expires.
And it expires, yeah. So, okay, I just, because I think that's one of the most critical things, the biggest question I get from people is, why is Bloomington investing in this project? And there is no money, I mean, I pay property taxes, I own a house, I do business in Bloomington, I pay license fees, other fees, businesses pay taxes. There is no Bloomington money, other than the money paid by Mall of America going into this project. Is that accurate?
Currently, yes, that is true.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just, if I have to push another button on a cash machine or anything else, I'm going to lose my goddamn mind. Okay, so we have a really nice straightforward motion, let's go look at this further and negotiate, basically. But I think I heard that there's at least a perception, and it's okaying the deal, that this is a good deal. That's not what I'm going to vote on, I'm going to vote on this sentence here, and I want to make sure, because this is going to be on the TV and all that stuff, that people are not mistaken about the import of the actual motion, because we're not approving the project, per se, we're approving the good, the extension of the good work that you have done into the next phase of the good work that you have done, and, I mean, you've, Councilmember Nelson, properly concerned about what perception is, and I guess, you know, for the audience at home, if nothing else, I just want to make sure that understand, that people understand, this is a step transaction, and we're approving, moving forward, but not the ultimate thing, because some of us may fall by the roadside as this gets moved forward.
Mayor Bussey, President Erickson, Councilmembers and Commissioners, that's correct. The motion tonight is to direct staff to develop agreements and documents based on the attached MOA waterpark term sheet for consideration at a future concurrent meeting of the City Council and Port Authority. There is still significant work to be done to develop the agreements themselves, and the project will have to go through the typical entitlement process at the city as well.
Commissioner Luns?
I agree with Commissioner Keller, but the implication, if this goes ahead, is that this project is improved. And I've had reticence on this from the very, very start, everyone knows that. The reticence starts is from, I don't want the project. If the project, the terms they've negotiated, the initial term sheet, I think it's a pretty good job done. But I see this, this project in noncompliance with more things we have on the website, in the South Loop District Plan, the Creative Placemaking Plan, and the uncertain sustainability portions of it. And those are big problems, they're unknowns. We can argue about the feasibility of building a waterpark in Minnesota, I mean, it's like building an ice castle at the Arctic Circle. I mean, I don't know. But the basic fact is that the, this water amusement park attraction doesn't fit the goals, the guidelines. If you read them and you look at, and you look at them, it's just right there. Taking the neighborhood from suburban to urban with a big 10-acre lateral horizontal use, show me, show me where that happens. The plan here, my brain, and I thought everyone's brain, was this is going to be a third Twin Cities business center. The real estate fundamentals are terrific. This was going to be like a Buckhead in Atlanta, there's going to be a Wall and Creed in Dallas, and Arlington, Virginia. Putting 10 acres to a cubic-oriented flat use is just not what the plan is. And most disappointing to me is that I've lauded, lauded, extolled Mall of America Company many times for being, being great property owners, managers, builders, operators, leasing agents, and innovators and creators, creativity people. I don't see any innovation or creativity here. This is the same time-worn model used in Jersey and Edmonton with a twist and a roof. And it is, it is them foregoing the opportunity in this terrific area to become a city builder. That's different from a suburban horizontal use developer. This is a chance to be a city builder, and that's why my opposition is fundamental, right from the fact that it is what it is.
Well, since that is, to some extent, in response to me, I feel like I need to say something. I got one more tranche of things to say later on, that at least, to some extent, I think, respond to your concern, although there will be a bit more process pieces, but you and I have talked, and I full well understand your position. So, sorry.
Well, I think, Commissioner Luns, everybody can arrive at different conclusions, and that's why we have seven people on the Port Authority, and we vote, and we look at these things, and we all have to make decisions of what we think makes the most sense. I would have to say, in having been involved with this since the inception, looking at it, that I think that this is exactly what was contemplated way back when Jim Lindell got involved with this project and looking to bring something to the city. And the thing that I have looked at with this project is that the waterpark is something that we know has worked. I think Kurt did a good job of talking about other things they've looked at, but they don't know they work. But if you take a look at what the zoning and everything for that site said, it's retail entertainment. And so I think that, but we may disagree, and that's part of the process that we go through. So I think it's important to move forward, and I know we've got some other people that haven't had a chance to get their points in, including Commissioner Peterson sitting up there in the screen. But, so I don't know who's next up on the queuing process here.
Council, any additional questions here on this side? Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a couple of questions for staff, and then I'll go back to one question I have on the sustainable design piece. In terms of where we're at with, you know, with this project, where does the discussion lie where we talk about labor peace? Does that happen here, or at some other stage of the game? And then also, I've got some questions for Kurt around, you know, just general labor philosophy as it comes to, you know, building out the project itself, and how they're going to, you know, who they're going to use to get that done.
Mayor Bussey, President Erickson, Councilmembers and Commissioners, I understand that this topic has come up before for this project, and so I'm actually going to turn it over to Mr. Hagan to speak to that.
Mayor, Port President, Councilmembers, Port Commissioners, we do have an agreement with Unite Here longstanding, I don't know, maybe 10 years ago now, I think it was in, when we did Phase 1C, where there's a project neutrality agreement, as we call it, where, for hospitality hotel projects. So any hotel project, because the Waterpark Hotel in this case, we're bound by that agreement that says we will remain neutral, and there's a list of items in that agreement and what we agree to, and we fully intend to honor that agreement. So I think that Unite Here labor peace agreement is already in place. Regarding building trades, as I think these bodies know, we've worked with the building trades now, and I think as Dan McConnell sent a letter out for 35 years, actually 38 years, going back, every project we've done at Mall of America's been under a project labor agreement, and we don't intend to stop that now, right? So we haven't negotiated one yet for the waterpark, we will. I have no doubt that all of it will be union construction, right? Standard agreements that we always have, there are specialty trades, we have to deal with those, theming, artists, things like that, that aren't local, that will be brought in, and we'll work that through with Dan, and how they pay into local benefits, and they have to pay prevailing wages, and, you know, that's pretty typical for us, and that will happen again on this project, so.
Thanks for clarifying that for me and the mayor, just have one last question on the sustainable design piece. I see that this term sheet was put together April 16th, I believe it was, kind of the same time the Sustainability Commission put together their letter. And so my question is for, you know, really, it's for the, maybe it's for the mayor and the manager, and for the port director, you know, in terms of the items that were brought forth from the Sustainability Commission, were those ideas at all considered with respect to the sustainable designs that are here in the project? Can you just give a little, I know that's going to be a question that the commission has with respect to this particular proposal we have before us?
Absolutely. Mayor Bussey, President Erickson, Councilmembers and Commissioners, we very much appreciated the time and thought that the Sustainability Commission put into these recommendations. Unfortunately, we were not able to commit to all of them at this time. It did result in an increase from the Mall of America side from 3.5 million to 3, to 5 million committed to the project, so there was an increase in committed funds to the project. Also, the addition of some more tailored language around how they will present information back to the Sustainability Commission or to the City Council about when they do have their Excel Energy Design Assistance Program, we will be able to see that information. So some of that language was incorporated. We understand it is not as much as would be desired, we acknowledge that. But our hope is that as the project proceeds, and as we start to see these opportunities studied with Excel, with LEED, the U.S. Green Building Council B3, whatever it may be, that those ideas, as the Mall of America and their architects and engineers review them, we can see more of those incorporated into the project.
Thanks for clarifying that, because I do know that's a question that will be asked.
I think we have Commissioner Peterson, who's been very patient, sitting there. We'll see his eyes open up.
Thank you. Just two comments. One is that, you know, in earlier conversations about this, I've been really concerned about the equity situation with respect to the project, and I think that the solution that the staff and the property owners have negotiated here really addresses my concerns around that. And I think it's a, it's a big improvement to the project as it was discussed earlier. The other thing I just want to respond to a little bit is the concept that somehow this isn't what was contemplated on this particular site. And I, while, during the meeting, I was kind of going and digging back in the GAS and then looking at the CX2 zoning district, and indoor recreational uses were listed as permitted users in that zoning district, and housing uses were listed as conditional. And if I remember right back, when we adopted the CX2 district, that was because of the proximity to the runway and the parting traffic from the airport, and we felt like we wanted to be more careful about locating residential uses in that particular location. And so I think, you know, this really has been something that's been contemplated since the beginning. Our zoning district and the content of the plan specifically tilt a bit in the direction of this sort of use, and so the idea that somehow this is counter to what we had planned on doing in this particular location just isn't supported by the actions that we've done in the past. And so, you know, I think we're still a ways from having agreement, the, it's, a lot of this is in the details, but I think that in terms of the big-picture objections that I had, I think this is a big move forward from what we have before, and in terms of the term sheet, I intend to support that tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson, next.
Councilmember Mua?
Thank you, Mayor.
Me, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, just point of order, are we on to comments now, or are we still doing questions? I wasn't, I wasn't sure, because I had comments that were separate from questions, but I didn't know where we were in the process.
I think we're.
Apologies for the interruption, Mr.
I think we've kind of melded the two together right now, so it's, yeah.
I would say I had comments leading to questions.
Okay.
You mean, Mr. Mayor, you don't want to segregate into four questions like we try to do this?
No, we made a run at that last time, and it didn't work out, so.
No worries.
I think if people have questions and comments, and I think.
Use your best efforts to.
I used my best efforts. I think, just to have this as a discussion now, questions and discussions. Councilmember Mua?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question regarding just milestones and contingency for the fact that we're using all of the funds within it. So what, what have we planned for contingency in case there's overruns? Is that borne solely by the property owner, or are we going to have our own contingency to support that?
Mayor, President Erickson, Councilmembers, Commissioners, Councilmember Mua, as of right now, the term is $160 million of public assistance. So any overages or overruns is borne by the developer, or they would need to look at, they're doing some value engineering to make sure that they can get within their financing terms. terms.
Thank you. Comment and then questions. So I have to, have to say comment, because I go back, not quite as far as you, but almost of the days of development, but on planning. But I distinctly remember during the Simon years, there was never going to be any water, and that was completely off the table. So we had that, what, eight-year period where there was Simon in here versus the 550 Gromesians, where what people don't shop, so therefore no water. So I have to say that. So anyway, so a couple of questions, some for Jason, some for Mr. Hagan. On the, the monitoring of this and the frequency in looking at the financials, is the intent to look at it monthly, quarterly, and just annually, or what's the intent for the cash flow to measure once it's operating and the income's coming in?
Sure. Mayor, President Erickson, commissioners, councilmembers, Commissioner Hunt, as of right now, we haven't gotten into full details as to, as to how often, if it's going to be quarterly, annually. It definitely will be annually, depending on the information that our municipal advisors may need with regards to the review, as well as our city's finance team. We may get the annual one, but then may even need to aggregate it down to the monthly, depending on what is, is needed for our review. And so I would say our term sheet is wide open-
Okay.
-to allow us to have open book.
Yeah, and I would, I would just think monthly might be in order, maybe a quarterly basis, trailing 12 months, certainly the annual, but looking at it that, so you've got the handle on what's actually coming in. The other question on that is, is the, the open book, and how much access is there, and is there going to be to the financial statements? And how much has been seen on the New Jersey? And from all reports, New Jersey's doing very well in Edmonton. I don't have anything to say on that. I don't know whether staff has seen those numbers and where you're at on that, and how does that compare to the projections that are being put in place for the Water Park here? Follow-up question on that is, we've heard, there's comment that there would be potential reduction to Bloomington residents. I don't think I ever heard an actual dollar amount, never heard an actual commitment as to when. I think one meeting, Mr. Hagan, had suggested it might be a discount, it might be weekdays. We never really heard, is it prime days? Is there? What might the fees be? We certainly saw the $100 a person in, in New Jersey. What are you anticipating here in this marketplace as a comparison? And how do those numbers compare in your projections?
Sure. Mayor, President, commissioners, councilmembers, Commissioner Hunt, to get at your first question, staff as well as our consultant, back in 2022, we actually went out to New Jersey and sat down with the, the financial folks operating that Water Park and reviewed the financials out there with regards to live analysis of their computer system. And from that, our consultant at that time was able to state that that Water Park was meeting, was meeting and exceeding the projections that were, were set at that time for the New Jersey Water Park. As far as, you know, utilizing them in, in the current pro forma that we are right now, staff has somewhat looked at that, but as previously back in 2022, when we worked with HLNA with regards to the review of the project, it, you know, it is adjusted for the, for the market factor from East Coast to the Midwest to adjust for that ticket price, as well as kind of the, the average per spend for guest. And so the analysis that staff has done, has looked at that to confirm that it is using kind of the Midwest projections for the typical Water Park user. With regards to the Water Park discount, we have been negotiating with 555, with Kurt on that analysis. Right now, we, I cannot state a dollar amount, but it is going to be equivalent to, to a military discount, is how we have kind of termed it with, with Mr. Hagan. Additionally, we have also looked at also including additional perks into that as well. So as well as a Bloomington resident discount, it potentially could be additional perks from free towel use or, or locker usage. And so I can let Mr. Hagan expand on that.
Mayor, President Erickson, council and port members, Commissioner Hunt, yeah, that's, you know, we've talked about that question, probably second only to equity, Bloomington discount. From our perspective, Bloomington residents will represent about 4% of our revenue, right? So give you 50% discount, right? But it becomes a politically sensitive question, right? Is a Bloomington resident more important than a military personnel? And then you get into the debate of, well, why are they getting this discount and somebody else's? Should the region get a discount? Because it's really their dollars, not Bloomington's dollars. So it becomes a politically sensitive question. It's not, it's not, from our perspective, it's not a material question in terms of dollars, right? It really doesn't matter. I won't say it doesn't matter, but it, it's, it's more, we need to work through, and, and one of the, one of the items our operations group came up with is maybe we do something rather than a, a discount, maybe we do, you know, early admission for Bloomington residents on, on these days. We'll open it up early for only Bloomington residents. Free towels, free, free perks. I think that's what we need to work through with staff. Again, there's no resistance on our part to providing a discount to Bloomington residents. We just need to make sure that we're treating others fairly, and we're not upsetting other vested parties that, that are interested in this, in this Water Park and, and other, you know, constituents.
It, it's, a comment on that, it just seems that throughout the, there's the commentary, running commentary that Bloomington residents are going to receive a discount. So people that are listening and so forth could be expecting that and might likely be expecting it.
Yeah.
I do have a comment on military, and this is specific because as, as at Disney, you know, there's, there's just not a discount for a veteran or military. You have to meet certain criteria. You know, it's not like going to Home Depot and showing your VA card or saying, hey, I'm retired, or I'm former military, versus in order to get a discount at Disney, you have to be either injured, full military, certain very stipulate, specific stipulation. So I'm kind of-
And there will be here-
-careful, hell, you're saying we're giving a military discount, so.
Well, it's also, it's also my understanding that in Florida, if you're a Florida resident, you do get some discounts at Disney World.
You do.
So again, it's something that I think that, there's probably mechanism that could work, and you could have Bloomington Days, and you could even have Eden Prairie Days or something else that you might-
Careful there.
Do.
Mr. Verugli, did you want to comment here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, President Erickson, commissioners. Just going back to one of Commissioner Hunt's first questions on the financial performance, and, and I heard the question is, you, you're recommending regular structured meetings on a, on a certain timely basis, but we will have information about the performance because the operation will have to be remitting admissions tax and liquor tax, as with any other business in the city of Bloomington, those come in on a regular cycle. So we'll be able to see-
Okay.
...the kind of activity that's happening almost real time.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to share my comments now. Maybe I'll get them started here, or started again, maybe. So first, I just want to thank staff and the 55 team, and really thank you to everybody who's been asking such good questions. I know it's made me, you know, kind of challenged my own thinking. So I will say, before I joined council, so I joined January 2020, I was one of those Bloomington residents that was probably not a huge fan of this idea, only because I was like, why does the Mall of America get so much attention, right? And then I joined council, January 2020, and it very soon became apparent of why the mall is so, so important to Bloomington. The pandemic hit, and we had a $7 million hole in our budget because the mall was shut down and the hotels were empty. And, I mean, I still remember the moment that Jamie told us that, and we had to figure out where were we going to cut, what positions were we not going to fill, who was losing their jobs, what programs were no longer going to operate, what parts of the city were we just going to shut down? And it was, I mean, it was some of the hardest days, right? I'm sure in many of our lives. And Saw was on the Community Advisory Budget Committee, so he wasn't left out. But going through that, two things became very apparent to me. One, we needed to kind of diversify our economic development priorities across the city, which we're doing. The port is expanding its scope. And the second was that, you know, we had to make sure that the tourism industry stayed vibrant and healthy in Bloomington, so that we didn't have a situation like that again. And, you know, there might be community members that disagree with that, but that was a decision that was made decades and decades ago, to double down on the hotel and tourism industry, the Mall of America. And I feel like it's incumbent upon us now to make sure that it stays healthy. And so when I think about the additional revenue that this is going to generate for our community at a time when we have increasing infrastructure investment needed, we're moving to a hybrid fire department, and our safer grant's going to run out in a couple of years, like, we need this additional revenue. And so, so with that said, obviously, my position is that I'm going to be supporting moving forward with this term sheet. I did want to acknowledge and appreciate the Sustainability Commission's discussion and recommendations. I was sorry I couldn't make the meeting because we had an HRA meeting at the same time. But I think probably my biggest challenge with the sustainability piece is what you mentioned, Mayor, and that's, we don't have a policy or standards in place. And so we have been asking for this for years with this Water Park, and I feel like it's, I mean, the conversation has just gotten better, right? The, the things that are coming forward have just gotten better, and I think that is to the credit of the Sustainability Commission and the thinking that has been done, and of course, to the credit to you and your team. Kurt, as you mentioned, this has been a priority for you guys for a long time. And so without having a policy and standards in place, it's really hard for me to say, well, I wouldn't want to move forward with this project, when we haven't done the same thing for other projects. And we know we have other projects we've supported that are huge water users, terrible for the environment, and we've never asked one question before approving their, approving their public support. And so, so as much as I agree with the Sustainability Commission, and I, I feel very strongly that we as a council need to prioritize getting a policy in place and getting those standards in place, I can't, I'm not going to let that, I'm going to continue, I'm going to support this project. So the last thing that I was going to say, and I think it's been said multiple times now, another reason I am supporting is that taxpayer dollars, Bloomington taxpayer dollars are not at risk or going into this project. I'm not going to go into, I'm not going to repeat what's already been said, but that's a really big deal for our community, and it's a big deal for me. And so I just wanted to say it again for those who are listening. Those are my comments.
Thank you, councilmember.
I know Commissioner Keller want to make some more comments.
Probably the last of them, you'll all be glad to hear. I want to thank Mr. Hagan for something that happened in the last meeting. You used the word, well, you used phrase acknowledging our fiduciary obligations, and maybe we don't talk about that enough, but that's a real thing. And I try to keep that in mind. It, it doesn't stay in my mind all the time, because we're rarely confronted with something of this complexity, not much less the magnitude. So differences of opinion, obviously. Good discussion, obviously. I've been honored to be on a commission that has an incredible array of talents that God knows I don't have. I don't have a calculator like this gentleman does, for example. And I think we've done well, significant part of that. Having said that, what I harped on in our last meeting is, I feel we've got this gap in how this gets done. I understand the sense of urgency. I understand 50 people can't get in a room to negotiate, but I also have done enough transactions in 40 years, you know, that 50 people can give input to five, 10 people in a room that's meaningful and at some detail. The equity piece is one of the things that has bothered me most. We, we had to talk about that. I felt better about it then, but there's still a lot of cake to be baked in that. And my concern is, I heard summer 2024, how is it, in the face of what I believe are very good laws, open meeting laws, can we get specific updates about words and things and give specific input? Because to be clear, I, I'm going to vote, and this is why I ask this question before, I'm going to vote the proposed motion. I'm not voting for a deal that in detail expands in one way or another beyond or in conflict with this. I'd been, I, I'd not just, everyone knows, they start down this path, and that number might change because you're making an adjustment here, making an adjustment there. And I, I think that given the pace that we've been presented with, we have to find a way for council and the Port Authority to be involved at a level of granularity that would not typically be the case. Typically, you know, your staff, everybody agrees, I think, wonderful, come to us, say, we're looking at doing this, this is what it looks like, and then that cake gets baked, and it comes back just the way it's advertised, and we're, you know, thumbs up. I probably voted no less than five years, and five times than God knows how many years. So I, I am giving you an ask, and my ask is, help us find a way to know what's going on in a meaningfully substantive way, so that people might be on the fence, won't say as, you know, plus 2.4 is over the top, and I'm just not going there. I want to know a lot more about this equity thing. I think there's some structural questions, and we've talked about this, that, that I don't understand, and I think it is understandable that people have been talking about these numbers, and that is the heart and soul of it. But there are other key things, and, and, and so, Lord knows, I have no suggestions for you, because I just don't know the law as much as, as you certainly do, Julie. But I would really like to have people involved in greater numbers, without holding back the work, but with meaningful data and a meaningful opportunity to comment, so that when we do get to that meeting in summer 2024, we'll say, well, of course, that's what we said, and, you know, thumbs up and all of that. So again, to reiterate, I'm voting for this, I'm not voting for a deal. I don't know what the hell that deal's going to be. I know some things about it that are agreed in some detail now, and again, I know some of that may need to change as things get adjusted, and, but I may love it, but I'm voting confidence to you and your folks, and you and your folks to work honestly and forthrightly to try to get to something that we as commissioners and council people traditionally have not been involved with at, again, a level of granularity, so we can have a similar motion that says, yeah, let's do that, the way I wrote it down. So I, I wish I could suggest a solution, but that never bothered me before, but it's making me crazy now. So that's all I have.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Keller. I mean, I think one of the things that's important when we get involved with a major project like this is always to take time and reflect how we can make the process better. And that's particularly important for the Port Authority where we're at now, because with their expanded authority, we've had a lot of things that we've had to deal with that we just haven't looked at before. So I think that there's real merit to doing that, and we'll certainly ask Holly and Jason and everybody else to, to do that. And I see that, I see Commissioner Luntz, but I also see we have Commissioner Peterson up there with his hand up quietly, so.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to let you know that I'm going to have about 10 more minutes, and then I need to be, I have a hard stop in about 10 minutes. So if we're, if we're converging on motion making, I'm kind of ready to do that, but I also don't want to cut off the discussion.
Mr. Luntz, did you?
Yes, I, I've got a comment, three comments, I'll make them quick. The first one, and I didn't expand on as much as I wanted relative to, was relative to the design excellence requirement under creative placemaking for the South Loop District. If the Water Park is built the way it's shown, the first permutation of this- If the water park is built the way it's shown, the first permutation of this on the nonprofit model, the building was entirely enclosed and was neither seen or heard. This one will be both seen and heard. And the implication on that is if I, you know, would be for future business growth in the South Loop, are people going to want to walk, going to want to locate in the South Loop, having to look at this facility and to hear this facility with 6,000 people a day with the roof and walls open? Okay, that's one consideration. The other consideration, the other two things are ironies. The one irony is that the projections of the cash flow on this are going to be very, very strong. They're going to go used to expand affordable housing. The irony being that one has to wonder whether those persons living in affordable housing, whatever, have the wherewithal to attend and use the facility. The last irony is totally wild conjecture. God forbid, if it goes ahead and it does not become the success that seems to be on the horizon, what would be the readaptive uses? I remember back the first iteration of this, there was, it was conjectured that maybe this could be a hydroponics farm. Well, I thought, wow, that's really wild. You know what? It's not. Go down I-35 north of Owatonna, look at the Reeval lettuce farm, 10 acres under glass with glass walls. Doesn't look that different except for the noodles, chutes and funnels extruding out of the building. So anyhow, those are just comments and observations.
Councilmember DeLisandro and then Councilmember Loman, and then I would make sure that we respect Commissioner Peterson's hard stop.
100% agree with you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for making the time. Like I said, I usually tried to do questions then comments, and if I'd known, I would have just gotten it all out.
Understood.
Apologies for that, sir. So two things really quickly. One, I, what I have not seen and I've asked for, and in fact, Jamie will laugh when I bring this up because I know he put it in bold lettering last time we talked. Why do we not have information about the Wisconsin Dells as a way to look at what water parks are doing and how to measure economic impact? I have not understood why when they're less than four hours away from us, we can't go get a lot of information that helps us get a lot more comfortable with not only the economic impact of a water park of that size in a place, but also their energy utilization, their water utilization. I mean, they've got to be thinking about that stuff, just like you, you know, because we have a, they have as much incentive to be sustainable and cost-reductive as any other water park owner. So I've been frustrated with not having that information because it just seems like such a gimme. So I'll throw that out there and say, maybe we could go get that because, you know, I'll take a trip to the Dells. I'm happy to. Anybody want to join me? It'd be great. But I bet you they could tell us, there is a Wisconsin Dells Tourism Bureau, just like what we have, and I bet you they'd love to have lunch with us. So maybe we could do that because I think we would get a lot of answers to a lot of questions, not only on how this thing is going to have in terms of, I mean, I just looked it up, the 1.95 billion in economic impact to the city of Wisconsin Dells. That's a big number. Now, I'm not saying, they have 20, we have one or two. That's not the same, but they wouldn't be able to tell you that if they didn't have a lot of data, and I bet they'd be willing to share it. Secondly, and more importantly, and Councilmember Carter said this very, very well, so much of what has caused so much kerfuffle, both in the public and with me personally on a moral grounds, is this idea that we're going to build something that is inherently not sustainable, right? The fact that people around the world are going to not have access to water in the next 50 years and we're going to put water into a pool, like of a massive size, is just really hard to take when you think about it, right? On moral grounds. Now, I'm not here to sit on a moral high horse, I'm here to pass an ordinance, but I would really love to have building standards that make it easier for me to drive my policy decisions because otherwise I'm left either with the lowest common denominator, which is what we have today, which is nothing, good luck to you, or we have our moral compasses, and that's not fair because that puts it on me as a very personal decision and that's not what I'm sitting in this chair for. So I entreat us on city council and on port, my understanding from earlier conversations is that the sustainability coordinator went and got Hennepin County money to actually fund somebody to help us build a sustainable policy, a sustainable building policy, and somehow that got killed. And I don't know how, but it got killed internally because it never got brought to council. And so I would, if you told me today that you could, I would want the planning department, along with the port authority and the Sustainability Commission and planning commissions in stakeholder management roles, to make this their number one priority so that this time next year, we're not sitting here having this conversation. It just has to be, we can't call a climate emergency and then not do something to change the trajectory of economic development in the city to be more sustainable. We just couldn't, we shouldn't do that. And we have sat on it for two years, so I entreat you on that front. Having said that, yeah, on the basis of the information in front of me, I'll be saying yes today. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Loman, quickly.
Steve, how much time do we got for you?
Uh, let's see, I can do probably five more minutes at this point.
Okay, thank you. I want to just be mindful of that, so I'll try to keep my remarks as brief as possible. So obviously, I'm a member of the Sustainability Commission, and I've been a member of the Sustainability Commission for a long time. Today happens to be Earth Day. And, you know, Kurt, you know, I also go back to religious types of things as well. In my tradition that I grew up in, there's a difference between a contract and a covenant. And I remember the magic that I saw when the Mall of America was first put together. And I believe in that magic as a kid growing up here, that amazing things can happen over there at the mall. And I entrust in that covenants of that idea, that that's possible, that we would have a LEED-certified water park that really sets the benchmark for an entire planet. I know some of my colleagues, you know, that are no longer on the commission, when we first came forward, we asked you to reduce that size of the pool, the wave pool, and you did it. You're, you did the LEED certification, I was there in the room a couple of Fridays ago and watched you take the first step on that. So there's many more things that I could say here. I think you've done the work and done the mission, and I've been very supportive of this, this particular project. And I look forward for us to move this particular proposal forward.
Thank you, Councilmember. I understand there's, I mean, there's discussion, we could probably go on all night, I have no doubt about that, and I appreciate that, the thought and the passion that people are putting into this. I do want to make sure that we get to a spot that we don't cut off Councilmember Peterson. And I also want to echo what Commissioner Keller said, that basically we're, the motions tonight are to continue this discussion. Basically, what we're saying is continue the discussion. And this is not the be all and end all, this is not the final vote that we'll be taking on this, this is not the final opportunity for discussion on this. And so again, I want to make sure that we have a full body on both bodies voting on this as we do this. I, again, apologizing for cutting this short, but Mr. President, I think that might be the way to go here.
No, I think so. And what I would do is entertain a motion for the Port Authority motion contained in page eight of your package. Motion made by Commissioner Keller, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nelson. Any further discussion? Do you want to call the roll, please?
Erickson?
Yes.
Bussie?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Hunt?
No.
Luntz?
No.
Keller?
Yes.
And Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Five two. Sorry.
And city council, I would look for a motion to direct staff to develop agreements and documents based on the attached MOA water park term sheet for consideration at a future concurrent meeting of the city council and the port authority.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Revas, second by Councilmember Loman. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Well, thank you to staff, to all involved, thanks to our city staff, the commissions and so on, and thanks to all of you for this discussion. And I do want to reiterate once again, this is just the next step. And it was going to be my final question to you, Holly, what are the next steps? How do we, how do we continue this and when are we going to get back together to talk more about this?
Absolutely. Mayor, President Erickson, council members and commissioners, thank you very much for your time and attention tonight and your consideration of the matter. We will be back before you within the next few months with agreements, so we will commence working on those with port council immediately.
Very good.
Thank you so much. Thank you, council and port members, appreciate it.
Very good. Councilmember Revas? Your microphone, please.
Just one quick comment. I just want to say that we do need transparency in the future for any big plans to get more information to us available. It's overwhelming to try to, and as you all know, I'm just learning the ropes in here, but it makes it overwhelming to try to absorb all the information. As you know, Kurt, I'm a big supporter of this project, even though a lot of constituents in my area are not supporters of it. But we do need to have more information. I agree with you, Commissioner, that we should have a lot more involvement in these plans in the future. And with that said, I mean, again, I support the project totally, but I just needed to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't want to make any comments while we're waiting for Steve because I don't think they were germane to the vote, but I want to just thank staff and Kurt and 555 for the work that they've done on this. I think the deal was, particularly with regards to the equity, extraordinarily innovative. And I really appreciate that they came up with a solution to that issue where the city gets all the benefits of equity up until, you know, the Mall of America puts equity into it. So, you know, and so we may do even better. And the fact that we can recycle or reuse this money for another project, that we unlocked some of this money for potential consideration of different types of projects, I think is a huge win by our staff and our team for the city of Bloomington, for the South Loop District, for everything. And I just really appreciate all the work that has gone into this. I do concur with Commissioner Keller and my colleague, Mr. Revas here, I'm sorry, council member, that, you know, the more information, the sooner, the better for everybody, but I think we all are going to agree with that. I just have one question, though, because I heard it come up a couple of times as BCVB, but is it not now BMTT?
It is.
Very good, Councilmember.
Okay, so if we could correct that in the future, you know, those types of mistakes.
Bloomington Convention and Visitors Bureau is now Bloomington, Minnesota Travel and Tourism.
That is correct.
Wow.
That is correct. City council, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Carter to adjourn. Council, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
And I will adjourn the port authority.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.[1784.61]